To order for the day, first item is approval of today's agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve today's agenda, all in favor signify by saying aye. Same sign, motion carries. Citizens to be heard, seen, none, approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second to pay the bills, all in favor signify by saying aye. Same sign, motion carries. Approval of minutes from the April ninth, two thousand and nineteen meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes for, all in favor signify by saying aye. Same sign, motion carries. Flood update, Gabe, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Gabe. So you're pretty much needed a recap of what I did yesterday. As of, so the numbers I got from the highway department were as of the fifth of the month, they hadn't had payroll done last week yet, so they didn't add that in, so that number's going to climb, but highway department as of the fifth, we're at one hundred and ten thousand, just about one hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine. Obviously, that's going to increase. Other county departments were at about forty-five hundred dollars, that'll go up, but that's mainly just salary. So right now Clay County itself is at about one hundred and fifteen thousand in flood-related expenses. City of Moorhead, I checked with them yesterday, they were at three hundred and ninety-four thousand. And still need to get cost estimates from the townships that were affected, city of Georgetown, and the watershed district. Last time I spoke to watershed, they were estimating about fifty thousand in contractor fees and whatnot, so, but I haven't gotten a hard number from them yet. Governor Walz, I sent you an email last week, Governor Walz did date the state declaration March twelfth, and during Trump's visit last week, President Trump's visit, the governor did express to him that Minnesota is requesting federal aid. It does appear that Minnesota will meet the state threshold for federal aid, the eight million, so that request has already been made. I did also reach out to HSEM Representative Director Kelly and relayed that Clay County Commission passed resolution requesting that we backdate our declaration to March first. I haven't gotten a hard nu, or a hard answer from them yet. One thing I was told was ultimately it's going to depend on, at least for federal aid, federal reimbursement, the date that FEMA decides on that. So they can vary from the, even the governor's declaration date, apparently last summer when they had this stuff up in Duluth, there was a little bit of, kind of give and take on the declaration dates. Ultimately, we might be at the mercy of that, but the nice thing about the federal one is a hundred percent reimbursable. One thing to keep in mind with that is wages that are covered are only overtime for that, so regular wages are not covered in that. So some of the numbers I did get from like the highway department stuff do include regular, which that counts towards our total, but it's not reimbursable, so just keep that in mind.
Was there, I was going to ask you last night, was there overtime involved with your department?
Yeah, yeah, mainly myself, I just, I guess prep work, and then, you know, mornings and stuff. My route would include Georgetown and stuff like that, so just to kind of keep up on that stuff. Some weekend stuff when the south branch of the Buffalo was up and going. Let's see, what else do I have? All right, and then tentatively, mid to late May, HSEM and FEMA assessment crews are scheduled to come, and they're going to try, I think, start their way, at least along the Red River Corner, just basically start, probably looking coming and work their way north. So tentatively, probably May twenty-something or another, they'll be here. So hopefully, we have a fairly good idea on damages and at least our recovery costs and things like that. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Gabe?
Good work.
Yeah, good work. First back at this, good job.
Thank you.
Okay, Sheriff, acceptance of donation from Bell State Bank for active shooter vests.
Morning Sheriff, Commissioner. How are you? We were awarded, we were fortunate enough to be awarded fifty-eight hundred and fifty dollars from Bell Bank to go towards active shooter vests. These funds came from their paid forward program, from their employees. It was very nice of them to do that, and it was, it's going to be able to supply fifteen vests for our entire patrol division. These vests are, they're rated for rifle rounds, so they provide a lot of extra protection for our deputies when they're on the critical incidents. They awarded us thirty-eight hundred and fifty dollars for fifteen vests, it's going to cost us forty-three hundred and fifty dollars, so the remaining five hundred dollars will come just right out of our regular budget, which we do have in there.
Any questions for the Sheriff? That's great, thanks.
I got a question, these vests, they'll withstand a point two-two-three round?
They will, yep.
But not a point-three-oh?
They will.
They will?
Yep, they're a heavy vest, the total weight of the vest is about twenty pounds alone, it's heavy, heavy plates in both the front and back.
They're not the kind you want to wear around all day long.
They're not, no, they're not a daily wear.
But if you need them, you want them, so.
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation.
Second.
I was there at the meeting there, and that was, that was really good for the Bell employees to get that money together, I mean, I mean, they have that paid forward program, whatever they do, and I grew up and got together, and one of them's the mother of one of our deputies, you know, and I think that's what started it all out, you know, and she encouraged somebody to sub it to pay for it, so I think for Bell Bank employees to come and, you know, give a contribution to Clay County, I really applaud them for that.
Yeah, absolutely. It's very fortunate for us, this is something that I wanted to, wanted to have for a while, but obviously, the funding's a little tough sometimes, but for this donation to come our way was very fortunate.
Yeah, it's good news. Any other discussion on this item? We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Same sign, motion carries. Thanks Sheriff.
Thank you.
Good work. Okay, request approval of lieutenant's union contract. Steve, you're going to take care of that?
Yeah, I'll take for Darren this morning. Morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners, before you this morning, we have the lieutenant's union contract up for your approval. Generally, they're here before you with a three-year contract, with our upcoming market study, through the union negotiations, they determined that they'd be looking for just a one-year contract. The contract includes a two percent increase, an increase in uniform allowance, and then a recalculation of their healthcare savings plan from twenty-five dollars per pay period to one-point-five percent of their gross pay. Now, that doesn't affect anything from the county's perspective, that is a, those funds come from their, from their paycheck, so with that, I would open up for any questions.
Any questions for Steve?
I know you probably don't know this because it's kind of more Darren's arena, but I just want to make sure that anything that's asked to be added to those contracts through either Ringel or Darren is exactly what this board puts, puts forward, and so I don't know, I heard there was possibly some tweaks in some of the verbiage, but I'm comfortable with this, but I just want to make sure going forward that.
Yes, no, this would be their contract until they would open up the next negotiations, which would have to come through this board.
Anything else? Any other questions? What's the board's wishes?
I'll move to approve the contract.
Second.
For one year.
Motion and a second to approve the contract, any further discussion?
I just also want to note that we've heard the concerns from this specific group, and I think that hopefully, that will be addressed with the wage study.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Steve.
I'm thinking I'll be next, too.
Okay, approval of construction change order.
Hey, Mr. Chair Commissioners, we have, we have change order number twenty-three before you this morning, this is related all to the, to the correctional facility. We have four items, the ductwork, there was, in the planning, there was a ductwork that was scheduled to go right through a skylight, and so that had to be readjusted, so that change was made. A PR sixty-three was just some, some furring, some patching between the new building and where the connections will be to the phase-two area. The PR sixty-four A was a foundation flashing, a clarification fluid barrier, the barrier, the barrier that was originally planned was a commercial, or excuse me, residential, a residential item, and the, it was changed to a commercial, which will provide better protection, and that was shared with us in committee that it would actually save, that would pay for itself in the coming years versus, versus the residential. And CP thirteen B was addressed last week at board, the asphalt project of one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Total contract revisions would be one hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine forty-seven. In the past, we've, we've, any contingencies, if it's come from our, from our owner contingencies, it's been credited back, until they reached the, the point where construction engineers have established where they felt comfortable moving into phase-two, and so just to be clear, this would have an effect on the guaranteed maximum price. Having said that, we do have contingency dollars in our, in our account, so it's not going to change the scope of, of the cost of the property. That I turn over for any questions.
Any questions for Steve on this item? What are the board's wishes?
I'm over approval. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the change order. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Same sign, motion carries. Okay, request to address Homestead credit.
I don't think we're answering, I think number seven.
Number seven, then, alternative nursing options for juvenile facility, James, come on up.
Morning, Mr. Sheriff.
Good morning.
Good morning. Well, I'm here today to, I guess, try to help address some of the nursing issues at the juvenile center. Currently, we contract with Public Health, was approached months back by Public Health, requesting to look at different alternatives for the juvenile center, as Public Health is having a hard time finding nurses. Our current nurse accepted a different job within Public Health about eight, nine months ago, but Public Health left her assigned at a juvenile center until they could fill the juvenile center nursing position. That position's been open since then, eight, nine months, they haven't been able to fill So what I have before you is a couple of different options, one, reached out to MENS, who currently does our healthcare services for our jail. MENS offered a couple of different quotes, gave all my sheets, I had them to look at in front of me.
There's some extra.
So currently, we're looking at with our Public Health, next year, we're looking at with our numbers increased, going up to two nurses, that's going to be an increased cost. I brought this before the advisory board last week, and they were in support of it. So I brought this one before our advisory board last week, and they're in support of moving ahead with something like this. What I did was I broke it down for Clay County and Clay County's costs on this, for a secure program, in two thousand and twenty, Clay County's usage of the secure program is trending down significantly, so Clay County's responsibility is trending down also as far as pay. Depends on the last three months here, Clay County's looking at spending close to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars less in two thousand and twenty than they did in two thousand and nineteen for the juvenile center, and again, that just depends on numbers of these next two months. So as far as the nursing and our healthcare services, the secure program pays about two-thirds of it, and the non-secure program pays one-third of it. That one-third is solely Clay County's program, Clay County's responsibility. As far as the two-thirds portion of the secured attention, feel very comfortable with that. The other third is Clay County's responsibility, and that's where I'm at. With the breakdown, there's some other benefits to this MENS program that we currently aren't getting, in terms of mental health services, in terms of actually a doctor that's able to prescribe meds right away, cuts down on our staff having to leave to go to the clinic for things like that.
I think there's a lot of benefits we discussed, we discussed with James and Steve and with the advisory board last week, and some of those are liability issues for all the counties involved in this project, which are significant, so Kevin, did you have something?
Yeah, I, you know, we had met a couple times with James and with Public Health, and Public Health certainly has been struggling with being able to fill one nurse, get along the potential for two, so in reviewing this, you know, the, for the, for the cost difference, we just, we just felt that, and I think the recommendation was, was that we gave, and that went, oh, there's Kathy, if you want to, we're talking about this now, but, but if, if the, if the, we, we recommended option number three, because actually, what option number three did was allowed James to redo his staffing and, and actually reduce his wages in his staff line item, because those duties would be taken over by MENS, and so we were, you know, we're fortunate that, that James went through that work, and I think it shows up in, in, in the salary, salary line item, and then as well as the other professional service line, and that, that number goes up, of course, but the salary line item goes down, so, and as Commissioner Whelan said, there's, anytime you're dealing with, with meds and, and.
Juveniles in general?
Juveniles in general, the liabilities that are there, those all shift over to MENS, and so, you know, so we certainly think that's a great deal, and I know Jamie was, represented Public Health at the regional meeting, and also shared the importance of maybe this moving over to MENS, so.
Thanks, Kenny.
What does MENS stand for?
Oh, boy.
Kathy?
None. It's MEND, not men's.
M E N D O.
Sorry, I thought you had that. Okay, well, my follow-up questions in that, so the three options, the one obviously is currently what we have, the two of full-time nurses, correct? Two would just be full-time nurse through MEND, and then three, you're adding a nurse tech, correct?
Correct.
So then, both two and three expands the amount of service, services.
If, if I can comment on that, Commissioner Mojo, I, you know, it certainly does, but, but one of the, one of the things, when you look at the, if you look at where we are currently at, for example, in two thousand and nineteen with the total expenditures, that we won't even talk about revenues right now, and you see that it's three, almost three-point-nine million, and with this MENS contract, it does move to four-point-two-six-three. What does not show here is the revenues, and right now, right now, we had forecast in our budget for two thousand and nineteen, an average of five non-member beds being used, and we have been averaging, we're at eight, so there's a, so just in the two thousand and eighteen budget alone, there was three hundred and some thousand dollars revenues over expenditures, and so we talked about the potential of using some of that, and the request is for this to move forward starting July one or June one?
It's going to take sixty days from the time.
Okay, okay, from the time we do this, but, but, so the goal was, was, I think we talked about July one, I think, is, is what we talked about with the, but anyway, so, so we think that even though I, option three actually has more, more dollars involved with the operation of it, there's a, some of it's freed up through labor savings, and the way to pay for it is, and keep in mind now, this thing fully starts in two thousand and twenty when our beds double, and so we're anticipating a lot more youth, too, so.
So my question wasn't specifically on dollars, but it was in terms of the medical services that would be provided. Do you feel that adding the technicians, that you would be able to better medically serve here?
Most definitely. It's because that would be their specialty, and that's what they do, that's all they do is hand out meds. Right now, our staff do absolutely everything, including calling in meds, verifying with pharmacy, setting up their Mars, giving the meds, and there's different names, generic names for meds, which come in sometimes, sometimes, there's all sorts of different things that could happen. It takes an extraordinary amount of time, or staff time, to do that. In addition, this, the services that this MENS program offers is, they have direct access to a doctor, and if, the youth right now tend to come into our facility with no refills left on their meds, and the doctor then refill those meds unless they see them, and they don't have an opening for the next three, four months. So now you have a kid in crisis that's off meds and can't get meds, this, this MENS program, the doctor that oversees it will sign the continuance of the meds and keep the use on those meds.
Benefit. The other piece I see here is in terms of mental health evaluations. I know in conversations that we've probably had in the last eighteen, twenty-four months, talked about Lakeland being able to provide some of that piece, is this eliminate Lakeland from the need, or just to help to spread out?
It would help, but right now, we don't have, we're not hooked up with the jail in Lakeland piece. Our non-secure program has Lakeland in our program for a thirty-day eval, and a couple additional hours, but there's really no real mental health piece like the jail currently has, and this, this would cover that.
Cover that, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Just a comment, I suppose, if, if we're able to address the mental health needs or get kids stabilized, I would guess that would significantly help the issues that we're seeing while they're there as well, specifically with staff.
Well, Mr. Sheriff, I would, I would move the recommendation by the regional group to go with option B, number three, in the attached packet here, and I would suggest that we make that date as early as possible, so if it can happen June first, I think we should do it June, June first, so, and again, I, I think we've got the thing covered, and we do have, we do have a nurse that has taken a different position, and she's stuck there because nobody, we can't find anybody.
Have you had any more contact with them, James, about when they can actually implement this?
I contacted them after the regional board, gave them update from the regional board, and he said it's usually sixty days after they sign the contract, so imagine we'd need the contract, run to the attorney's office, and then, you know, sixty days from there, he said that they can.
Okay, well, it's almost.
My motion is as soon as possible.
Yeah, expedited as soon as possible, so.
It's a one-year, correct?
It's a three-year contract, and it's, they request a two percent pay raise every year, two percent cost increase every year.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second motion.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Same sign, motion carries. Thanks, James, thanks ladies, good work.
Got a contract to work on, though.
See her now? Okay. Okay, we'll go back to item six, request to address Homestead Credit, Bernard Olick.
Good timing, Nancy, come on up, too, so. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning to you all. Well, my name is Bernard Olick, and I'm here for a, an attractive land that has been in our family since nineteen oh five, and I received the tax statement, probably two weeks ago, maybe a little more, and I was denied, thank you, Homestead credits on this, and it's been in Homestead ever since Homestead has been around. And the reason for the mix-up is, I took my form to the Farm Service Center, and from there, they typed in the wrong description of the land, so technically, I suppose I wouldn't have to pay taxes at all if I didn't own the land, but I'm not going to give the land up, because, as I said, or stated, it's been in the family for a number of years. Now, this parcel of land here went from two thousand and eighteen taxes with the Homestead credits, from thirty-four-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars, to two thousand and nineteen, to five thousand and eight dollars, an increase of some fifteen-hundred dollars. That would put me in lay, in lay terms, sixty-two dollars per acre. Now, I have basically five structures on the, on the, on the Homestead. The house was built in nineteen thirty-seven and has been kept up. I have a forty-by-eighty quadset that was built in nineteen sixty-eight, and then I have a forty-four-by-eighty shop that was built in two thousand and twelve. Other than that, there's grade structures there, some of them forty years of age. So it would definitely put me at the very, very, very high end of a tax base, at sixty-two dollars. Prior, with the Homestead credit, it would have been forty-two dollars. So being that there was really virtually nothing at the time that I received the tax notice, there was virtually nothing that I could have done about it. It was a mix-up from the Farm Service Center to Nancy's office, and I've been, I've gone through all of the hoops, so to speak. I went to the evaluation meeting for market ownership, and Nancy was there, so she's well aware of our conditions here. I would request that, I would be honored with the Homestead credit, because it means it was no fault of certainly not our auditor's office, and certainly not of my fault, and the number of people, and I'm certainly not pointing a finger at our Farm Service Center, they do an excellent job for the, for what they go through, because looking at my few articles here of land ownership, I'm just a small fish in the ocean. You've got some huge farms out there, and we are very limited on time when you go into, first of all, you have to have an appointment to get into the Farm Service Center, and when you have that appointment, you're, you're not going to sit there for two or three hours going through whatever it may be, so. I, I don't point a finger at anyone on this, it's just a simple mistake, and they're made every day, and I, again, would request that this parcel of land back to Homestead credits.
Thank you, Jenny.
I have a question, so when I did my Homestead credit for my property, I don't recall doing it through the FSA office, can you clarify? I just don't understand.
Correct, Mr. Olick qualifies for a different program, it's called special ad, and each and every year, and in your packet, an application goes out to current people that are in the program, or anyone that we might have heard or requested. The first page is a little bit of history, why special ad came to be, and it actually started after the flood that occurred in the Red River Valley, where people were forced off their farmland, they couldn't occupy their home anymore, so they moved to different locations, but they were still actively farming. And throughout the years, it has been modified slightly to include different types of people who could qualify if they were farming it. Every year, send out an application form to people who presently get it, requesting that they complete the form, submit the one-fifty-six from the FSA office, and a Schedule F to prove the issue, and then have a completed application. It needs to be back to our department by December fifteenth of each year, so yes, the timing is not the best. timing is not the best, um, because it is after the TNT notices are sent and that type of thing, but that's the deadline that's currently in statute. The application basically indicates that we need this type of information and which parcels that they wish to qualify for. The FSA paperwork is by legal description and so in Mr. Olick's situation, there were legal descriptions indicated, but it didn't cover all the parcels that he had. And so we took with what the information we received and granted Homestead on those parcels. This particular one was not in that report by the FSA.
So does the board have the authority to reinstate the Homestead credit?
You might have that authority. There are other applications that were submitted for the payable nineteen that also missed pieces of information, be it on the FSA report or, you know, Schedule F, and they were not granted. So there are other applications.
Frank?
I've been working with Nancy on some of these quite a bit and yes, there were other applications that not have all the information or whatever. This is a, a situation, I think, where there was a typo, you know, and he in actuality does own the land, nothing changed, other than there was a typo. I mean, it's Nancy's office did their job, um, Mr. Olick did his job, everything was done right except for the typo. Now, if we're going to go by typo, I think I would, I would like to recommend that we overrule this, whatever, and give him the exception.
Well, that's why I had that question, do we have the authority to do that?
If we do, I'll make that motion.
So we've got a motion, assuming we have the authority to reinstate the, the Homestead credit.
And I think it has to go to you first, I think, as far as I understand.
Then we would treat it as an abatement.
Okay. Uh, I don't know if you, it goes to us, I think, as far as I understood.
Correct, but if.
I'll second Frank's motion, so we can.
Okay.
Okay, so we got a motion in a second and so more discussion.
Did you want to finish?
No, go ahead.
In terms of, if someone does lose the Homestead credit, can it be gained back?
Yes, because next or the end of this year, we'll send out that same application and we'll do the process all over again.
So he has the opportunity to make sure that anything that may have been missing from these that in future years will be, we can add.
Reinstate it.
Yep, it's.
Nothing was missing, other than it was a typo.
Right, I'm just making for more of the public's information that once you, if you were to lose a Homestead credit, it's something that can be added back.
Yes.
Okay, well, we have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion?
So, so this would be done through an abatement of the tax, is that what you were saying?
I suppose that's the way we would make a paper trail for it, but if there's a motion to grant it, then.
Yeah, well, I, I guess however it, it can be done because of, you know, it, if it can't, if it can't be done by reinstating the Homestead, then we're back, because if that's what the motion is, then we're back to square one where we haven't gone anywhere. But, so then our second option would be through an abatement process, right? So, you know, so, you know, if there would be a willing, a willing friendly amendment to the motion, I think it should be, to be either the reinstatement of the, of the Homestead credit for that year or an abatement of that portion of the Homestead tax that was lost due to error.
Is that okay with you, Frank?
Whatever makes it that he, that he gets back to the, for whatever it is.
Correct.
Okay, with the maker in the second, okay. That's a good idea. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same say, motion carries. There you go, Mr. Olick.
Well, I thank you very much for your time in the commission. I appreciate that and uh, whatever needs to be done, I plan on paying my first half of the taxes here, just around the corner, so I would, I would be in time to say.
You're quick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, committee reports, Jenny.
Sorry, last week, sorry, what's your, last week I attended the planning commission and we had our new member, we had, I'm gappy, what did we do? We had one hearing that we passed, but now I can't find my notes, so let me find it and I'll circle back after that. Yesterday, we attended the small cities meeting and here to hit it off. Thank you to them for hosting. I continue to think that that's a great way for us to um, travel to the outer parts of the county to hear what's going on from the different cities, uh, also for staff to get to know different representatives. We, I think, had a pretty good conversation about um, uh, the county, the flood recap for everyone and construction plans. Also, I feel, um, just to update that there are a lot of new lots going on, especially in Dilworth and Glendon, Barnesville has some, and then um, also talked a little bit about the Highway thirty-four speed through Barnesville, if we can address with the state on, on lowering that speed, so. Other than that, that kind of puts it on record.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, on April sixteenth, um, we had a insurance committee meeting and um, at that meeting, Steve Smith and Joanne Whacker from um, the Employee Benefit Consultant Services talked to us about, and actually their, name of their company is National Insurance Services, talked about different ways to um, you know, re, review our policies and, and offer services so that our employees can pick the best plan for them. Obviously, there's um, an interest in, in the triple goal plan, isn't it really expensive plan for, for the county and so we're looking at ways we could maybe eliminate that plan. So it just continues to have discussion on that. We're gonna, we're gonna probably have, um, we're gonna meet more often with the hopes of actually trying to get a recommendation in before open enrollment come this fall, so, so I think there's, you know, and I, there's, I, I want to say that that, that insurance committee, there's an awful lot of, there's representation from all entities, the bargaining units as well as management and, and employees who are not part of manage, or labor unions. And there really is a, I think there's a common goal amongst all of them to, just to try to improve the health insurance benefits package for the county at the lowest, you know, price as possible. So I, so there's a really good commitment on the part of that group, I think, so.
Kevin, have you had talked about the dental insurance and how the dental changes?
Yeah, 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 and I, you know, and um, it, we didn't spend a lot of time talking about that that day, but we do know that there's um, a lot of people that are unhappy with, with that change. However, um, we learned that, that some of those changes, had we even stayed with our previous provider, would have happened anyway. You know, so I think, I know Pam, you were in that meeting too, weren't you, in that, on the insurance?
No, I wasn't, it was Katie.
Oh, okay, Katie, okay, Katie was, okay, yeah, so um, but I, you know, I think uh, and Steve can, but that, that was brought up and, and I think there's a lot of people that share that because there were, there were now some dental firms that wouldn't even accept the insurance anymore, which they did before. And so we're, that's going to be part of the review and how we can um, maybe try to get that back to where it was, so. I hope that answers your question.
It did, it just sounds like it's kind of an unknown in terms of.
Yeah, and but there's.
From our perspective, but from providers' perspective.
Yeah, yeah. And then um, that afternoon, um, the, we had a diversion, the diversion authority was invited to a, a meeting put on by the Army Corps of Engineers and it was opened by Colonel Cawkins and, and of course, General Semenite, the head of the, Chief of Engineers and commanding general of the US Army Corps of Engineers was here and he, he emphasized the importance of the diversion project to the, to the United States. And he mentioned it was in the top twenty projects in the entire country that they want to see done, so it was um, he really gave some assurances and the fact that the federal government raised their commitment on the, on the partnership by three hundred million dollars was significant and, and he said that now that, now that this work is being granted to start on the inlet structures in North Dakota, he, he believes that that's really going to improve the funding stream from the federal government, so, so it was uh, nice to hear from the general. Okay, then uh, on Thursday, uh, we, we had the regional juvenile detention meeting and we went through uh, several um, things, but most, most of the time, I think, was spent on what we talked about today with the nurses. We got an update on the two thousand and eighteen budget and it, you know, that was where we had three hundred and forty-five thousand revenues over expenditures and where we are at year to date with the two thousand and nineteen budget, we're sitting really well there. And I think that's enough on that one. And yesterday morning, we had a, the chair's coordination meeting with the diversion authority and we went over um, North Dakota legislative issues that are going on. Uh, we talked about the, more on that Army Corps inlet structure being done, a little bit of discussion about um, draft permit conditions from the Buffalo River and Watershed District and a presentation on, on that meeting going to be held tonight. There's still negotiations going on with Horace and um, that's, and I know, I brought up again because there was a meeting and I know um, Mark Anderson at a, at a meeting that we had, a technical meeting that was over at Houston Engineering that I went to, there was a question raised about two township roads being able to go up and over. And so I'm kind of pursuing that more and getting our staff to see if, if that's something that we can't make work. Right now, they're showing as being blocked off and, and this doesn't go over the north-south, it's the east-west tieback levee, so, um, so they're working on trying to see if that can be accommodated there. And then last night, I had the, the same as you folks, we went to the Hitterdole and thanked them for, for that and, and the only, the only thing that, that I, I wish we'd see more of, there was, there was no Saban, there was no Cragness, there was no Georgetown, there was no Holly, there was no Yulin, there was no Comstock there. And I, you know, I kinda, I, I wish we could get all of them to partake in these and I know it's probably a little bit unfair maybe for Georgetown up there right now, they know they're, you know, they're still fighting the remnants of, of flooding, so, but I, I hope we can.
I think the Monday night was a problem. Holly's usually very present and they have, you know, city council meetings.
Well, even Dilworth had to leave.
Dilworth had to leave and so Mondays, I don't think are great nights, but.
Yeah, but you know, I mean, there's, you know, there's also, I know there's things happening in, in Saban and, you know, and I think it would be good to hear from Yulin and, and those areas as well, so. That concludes my report.
Okay.
I finally, well, woke and now I know what the planning commission was about, I feel like we can share that. Uh, we talked about, uh, there was a request from the Barnesville Joint Powers area to expand that area a little bit east to cover the, what was known as the Galaxy Bowling Alley Supper Club area and that was recommended not only from the Barnesville City Council, but also the Joint Powers, that request was granted. And then we had further discussion on the renewable energy ordinance that we passed this fall. There may be some wording that um, is not specifically clear, so we're going to continue discussion on updating that.
Thanks, Frank.
On Wednesday, I went to the Historical Society meeting and a lot of good news there. I mean, the arts, some of them, the Arts Council was there and really praised Maureen for the work she's doing. She was talking about museums and stuff like that, you know, a lot of museums you go into, you see the ox carton and all that stuff sitting there and two, three years later, you go in there and still the ox carton sitting there and stuff like that, but you go into the Historical Society in Clay County and that is constantly changing, coming up with new programs and stuff like that. So if you visit it once, you know, say, well, I was already there once, you know, but uh, they keep changing things there and there's always new stuff there for interest and uh, and she's been recognized for all the grants that she, she's gotten there, so it's a lot of good news for the Historical Society there and it's uh, they're doing some good work there. Friday morning, we ready, we hit that on the agenda, the Bell Bank donation with presentation over to Law Enforcement Center and uh, again, I really want to thank Bell Bank for their donation, it was a nice thing to do. Small Cities, I too echo what Commissioner Campbell's saying, it's unfortunate, you know, that, I want to thank this, our staff for being there, you know, I think we had around ten, twelve people there, whatever, you know, our staff driving up there, you know, so I guess you want a, an audience, I guess, and uh, it was unfortunate, there were more and more cities there, you know, so makes you wonder, are we doing the right thing or do we have, do we advertise enough, but dates probably, you're right, there probably is a bad date there, there and uh, I really look forward to meeting with those cities and I think it's important that we do. I think they appreciate to get the information and stuff like that, so I want to keep that up and uh, last night and after the small cities meeting, I went to the Dilworth City Council meeting and there they, uh, the one main thing they did there was they, they approved their contract with Mohit for their, their attorney services there, so. And other than that, that's my report.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. On Tuesday, I attended the insurance committee that Commissioner Campbell referenced and one of the things that stood out was the, we had a presentation from two National Insurance Service consultants, Steve Smith and Joanne Whacker, and the difficulty that we're offering too many plans and we have too many singles and not enough families, it's kind of out of whack. We have ninety percent singles in our plan currently, ten percent families and we should be at least seventy, thirty. And it's going to be difficult going forward, but we had good support from all the union people that were there and all the participants. On the seven, on Wednesday the seventeenth, I attended the Early Childhood Initiative meeting, uh, the legislators were there and they gave us updates about the proposed sunsetting of the provider tax for medical and what the difficulties we would encounter on a county level if that should sunset and they expressed their support for continuing that two percent provider tax. On the eighteenth, I attended the MetraCog meeting and we discussed the MetraCog's temporary move over to the Fargo City Hall while their facility is being remodeled in the case, the case building. And uh, then on Monday, I attended the small cities that everybody discussed here earlier. That's my report.
Thank you. I'll, go ahead.
They've been talking, several people talking about this dental insurance. I don't know, because I've got it too, you know, and I've used it twice already this year, they paid my whole bill, so I don't know if I'm just going to the right dentist.
You're going to the right dentist, I guess.
You're going to the right dentist, yeah.
Okay, so it's just, I, I really like what you have.
It's a, it's a provider issue, I think mostly, that's.
And I know my dentist doesn't participate in the Luke Austin, so, but this must work, so, just the info.
I also had, I was at the Rural Cities Meeting and that was a good meeting and hopefully we'll get some of those other towns there in the future. Had the detention advisory, which we've already discussed at length, and I had a EDC Executive Committee meeting and we just had some general business updates there, so that was it for me. Steve? Steve?
I think it's the chair. After board last week, I participated in meeting with Mr. Campbell and Whalen, Kathy McCain, James O'Donnell on the men's contract that was here before board this morning. I also participated in the insurance committee meeting after that. Seventeenth, I participated in the central administration meeting. I had a lot of discussions on campus activities, including our management retreat this afternoon, or later this morning. That afternoon, I met with Holly Witt and Jane Estes from Lakes Country. Lakes Country is, is looking at, seeing what the interest is in, in having an intensive leadership training program in our region, and so we're just looking for some information on what, what we're seeing in Clay County. On the 18th, I participated in the Step Three Union Grievance Hearing. Yesterday, participated in the diversion authority chair meeting, Commissioner Campbell spoke about, and also participated in the Rural City and County Meeting. Again, thank you, and for hosting, or Hitterdall, excuse me. They will also be having their 135th Centennial this, this summer. And it was also, it's, it's good to hear about the different developments that are happening. There are a number of new lots that are gonna be going in Dilworth and Barnesville, and so, opportunity for future growth, so. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Pam, anything?
No, I was also at the meeting last night, other than that, I don't think we've got much going on.
Thank you. Okay, we, let's take about an eight-minute break, and we'll have the bid openings and move on, so. Okay, we can resume the meeting. Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
I've got three items on our agenda today for the Highway Department. First item is request to purchase a bulldozer utilizing gravel tax reserve funds. It's something I've been working with the auditor on for probably about a month or two. We, we also researched it through the county attorney's office, and it was a little gray as whether the reserve funds could be utilized for equipment purchases. So Lori went to the state auditor and checked with them, and he did give us approval. She came to our Highway Committee meeting last week, and the, the expression was that if it's used for any purposes outside of gravel tax, gravel pits, that those funds need to be prorated or paid back to the reserve fund, which to me makes perfect good sense, so. I mean, obviously, there could be additional uses for a piece of equipment like this, whether it's pushing back snow, or doing some ditch clearing work, or maybe even out at the landfill. Any additional hours outside of gravel reclamation, I guess, would be paid back to the reserve fund. We, we took a look at what we feel are probably the two best pieces of equipment, I guess, in our area. The local dealers we work with, Caterpillar and John Deere. We tried our darndest to put 'em together, so they're apples to apples, and for the most part, we did, with equipment, with size, with some of the options that they have, with the warranties. And the one thing that our, our crews really wanted was what's called a high-drive machine, so it's got the, the rear drive on the bulldozers up in the air, so the track kinda goes up, makes it a lot easier to clean when you get in the mud. It's a little, the drive itself is, is actually outside of the mud, so it's not down in there. The ride is a little bit better on it. It also has a slope assist function with it, which, so our guys don't run this equipment daily like some of the contractors do. Our maintenance foreman thinks the slope assist will really assist them when they are doing reclamation, so if they have a 2% slope out there where they're trying to, you know, you have to reclaim these slopes so they're not vertical on these pits, and it'll just assist them a lot better when they're doing the work out there. We realized that the CAT is a little bit more expensive, but in all the things that we looked at to include resale, in looking back at a five-year resale, it could be as much as $28,000 more for the CAT. And our, our, our guys have, have recommended and pushed that we try to recommend the CAT. Price on that is $272,530. As you can see, the gravel tax funds have more than enough money in there to purchase this, and I think it would be a really good asset to the county. I know, I know we can put it to use right away. We've got three pits in the county. We've got one up on, by the Felton pit on 108, there's one on 26, and then we also have the one in Riverton Township, and I think there's resources there too that we can get after, so there's sand and gravel and rocks that can be crushed down, and we haven't spent a lot of time in that pit. I think it was initially purchased by Solid Waste, but it's very, very well located, it's right in the center of the county, it would be a, you know, we, we did use it a little bit in '09, I think we stored some sandbags out there. We've stored some, some asphalt reclaim out there, there's a nice little pad, and I think there's additional resources that could be looked into.
Okay.
Have, have we been renting bulldozers before, or what did?
Yeah, this past spring, anyway, we definitely rented and, and pushed back quite a bit of snow.
Okay. Well, we discussed this at Highway Tracking, and I would recommend that we go with the CAT dozer from Butler.
So, you making a motion for that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion on that.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, to approve the purchase of the Caterpillar. Any further discussion?
Just wanna double check, that's the higher bid.
That's the higher bid.
It is the higher bid, but that's different options on.
Dave, does, does, do those, do they have the GPS stuff in them for?
They're compatible, I don't think we'll utilize that. As far, a lot of times, like with the contractors that we hire, we actually give them our surface model from our designs, and they put that right in there so that they can build the roadway, and you don't have to do near as much staking. It's almost called stakeless technology. But I guess ours, we.
So when we, when we reclaim gravel pits, for example, do we have to, do we have to set that to certain elevations, or is that, is that part of the requirement, or?
It's gotta be a certain slope, it's gotta be a gradual slope, 10 to 1 or a 20 to 1.
Okay.
It's the biggest thing, so you don't have vertical faces.
Okay.
It's the biggest thing, so you don't have erosion, you don't have dangerous slopes out there where someone could get hurt. They want it to look more natural.
So we don't need to get into the grading to a certain?
Absolutely. That, that was the whole purpose of not having, to have some more expensive GPS options for that.
But it would be compatible to add if something ever changed?
Correct, absolutely, yep.
Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
All right, we've got two bid openings. First one is for seal coating on various county roads throughout Clay County. Our engineer's estimate for the seal coating project is $841,192.02. Does everybody have a business sheet? Lee tells me we got four bidders for this one, so I was extremely happy to see that. We did offer electronic bidding on this project, as well as the, the next bid too. We did get four electronic bids for the seal coats, which is nice to see the contractors utilizing that, it's very efficient.
Careful what you say, last time you said it.
Yeah, just stop behind the head. I'll just leave it at that. There was no addendums on this one, so just acknowledge that. So the first contract that we will open up is Pearson Brothers. Oh, they, they started the process but didn't finish it. So, first contractor is Asphalt Surface Technologies, and I believe they might be out of St. Cloud area. Looks like their bid is complete. They do have bid bond here, and they're on a 5%, and their bid is $642,520.86. Our next contract, our next bid, is from Morris Seal Coat and Trucking. Bid is complete, and bid bond, they're on a 5% is present.
Where are they from?
I think Morris, Minnesota.
Oh, okay. That was easy to figure out.
And their bid is $688,336.63. Actually puts them right in order, it's just pretty easy, I kinda like this. The next bid is from Allied Blacktop Company.
Do you know where they're from?
No, I do not.
I don't either.
Doesn't really say without digging into it exactly where they're from. Allied Blacktop does have a complete bid and a bid bond amount of 5%, and their bid is $777,800.04. And then the last bid we got is from Farner Asphalt Sealers, and it does look like they're from Eau Claire. They do have complete bid and bid bond amount of 5%, and their bid is $792,777.82. So with that, I guess I would recommend, you know, as long as we do not come up with any errors, which we shouldn't, but I would recommend Asphalt, Aztec, I guess, they're a contractor who we've used before, well-known in the, in our area and our region for doing this kinda work, so.
I guess so. I'll make a motion to accept that bid, I guess, after you review all the things, and they continue to being a little bit and qualify, I make a motion to accept that bid.
Second. Motion and a second to approve Asphalt Surface Technologies Corporation bid. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
So on this one, we ended up with two electronic bids.
Two bids.
And three paper bids. So we'll go through the two electronic bids first, and then we'll double-check bid bonds and read the paper bids after that. No addendums on this one either?
Nope.
So no addendums. So this is for the 15th Avenue Grading Project. This is one their Oakport Township received a local improvement program grant. County has been sponsored the project for them, and did the design, and we'll do the construction engineering as well. The estimate is, engineer's estimate is $500,057.0. And we will go through the first two electronic bids. First bid is from RJ Zaverills and Sons, they're out of East Grand Forks. Complete bid is present, and bid bond is also present, amount of 5%. Their bid is $472,674.88. The next electronic bid is from Central Specialties, and they're from Alexandria. Complete bid, as well as bid bond, is present, and their bid is $497,416.30. The next bid we're gonna read is a paper copy from Border States Paving, from, I believe they're from Fargo. They do have bid bond here, and they're on a 5%. And grand total, $428,356.35. Okay, the next bidder is Northern Improvement from Fargo, North Dakota. They do have bid bond, amount of 5%. And like I said, there was no addendums on this one. And the bid from Northern Improvement is $446,765.98. And the last bidder is Celine Brothers from Holly. Bid mon, bid bond amount of 5%. And grand total bid is $447,733.0. Is it Border States, or is that the?
Yeah.
So being that that one is a paper one, obviously, we're gonna go back and tally all these up and take a look. Apparently, a little better, it looks like it's Border States, out of Fargo. They do a lot of paving in the area, and I feel like they would do an excellent job. There's really not a lot of grading, there's mostly hauling in the gravel and, and paving on this one, for the most part, but I guess I would recommend approval of them based on no errors in their bids.
Contingent on the approval, make a motion to appoint the contractor to Border State.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the Border State spin.
And I guess that would be contingent on approval by the Oakport Township Board as well. Hey, I'm sorry.
In the, so there's, there's very little grading, so the ditch slopes and everything, or there's nothing changed in the ditch slopes?
Yeah, and the road is extremely wide out there.
Right.
It's been pushed out over the years, so it'll be a, it's a rather, it's a very, very simple job, very little grading. You said most of the, most of the dollars, three-fourths of it will be on asphalt paving.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else come before the board today? Hearing none, we're adjourned.